I now call the special meeting for July 5th, 2022 to order. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hope.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry. Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
I'd like to make a motion, be going in a closed session to discuss collective bargaining contracts and pending litigation.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Helped with a second from Commissioner Gauss and Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hope.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to go into closed session is approved by an all yes vote.
We will now be going into closed session and we will be coming out of closed session before going into the pre-meeting.
At this time, anyone who is on Zoom will be moved to the waiting room.
All in favor?
Okay, let's do it.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Squirt.
Squirt.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we will now begin our pre-meeting in the back room.
Shows up.
At this time, we will begin our work-study session for the Adrian City Commission on July 5th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hope.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
I'm here.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, tonight, we had some further discussion regarding the Grand Illinois Chamber of Commerce. Commissioner Gauss asked that we have further discussion on this item tonight, so I'll turn the floor over to him. I would say that in terms of progress being made since our prior discussion and our visit from the director, I, in my estimation, has been a social media film, relax our events. They've given us hoops to jump through in terms of any kind of assistance with the market and the like. Jay Marks is here and can speak to it as well, but like I say, I don't feel like we're getting much service of member.
And I'd like to hear what Jay has to say or enlighten us on anything that he has input on.
So a couple of things. After the last meeting, both personnel and I sent him information of just what we were looking for. Real simple, I think there were like three bullet points for social media, share us a new newsletter, that's great. And, you know, those were really the two biggest things that we wanted out of it. It wasn't anything that any other business wouldn't get, right? We're not asking for extras, just the same kind of, same kind of stuff. And Michelle got the laundry list back, creative graphic, you know, create all this other stuff. And all we really wanted to do was just share with you about our social media. As we reviewed it, they might have 400 businesses, and if they put in the email, it only goes to the business owner, it doesn't go to employees. And that's what we want targeted at the employees, not the business owners, so it dies there. Social media, they had a couple thousand, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but our social media accounts that we have for the city have significantly more. I think even to come to see Farmer's Market had more than Chambers', so you get an idea of where they're, where they're at with stuff. And then for the, as far as the Mark Farmer's Market, he sent this to me, and the top half is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven things he wanted us to do from the market perspective, including things like provide opportunity for chamber members to participate in, promote their business through mutual benefit of the Adrian market, communicate chamber opportunities and resources to market vendors, minimally four times through the season, provide a weekly promotional grant, et cetera, et cetera. And then they would promote our market. They would give promotional, you know, promotional material for the chamber to us to provide to vendors. So there was a lot of us doing for them and not as much them doing for us. So I didn't take them up on their offer because I didn't see the cost benefit for us. So I mean, that's kind of where I stood with it. I chaired with Greg and had that conversation.
Well. Let's kind of bend the MO is that when we ask for any, we're a member, we're one of the largest members, we pay one of the largest membership fees. And when we ask for anything, it's right, all right, well, what can you do for us in exchange as the chamber? Never, oh yeah, you're a member, here's what we do. That's kind of, I think you'd agree, Jay, that's kind of the approach we've gotten since.
And there was a, there was a situation where they promoted our, my personal business over promoting the market and put me in a very difficult situation. I had that conversation with him, promote the market, my personal business. My personal, by the way, my personal business is a member of the chamber, but we don't have these same kind of, it's not the same kind of relationship that the city has for whatever reason. So our stuff gets promoted, we don't ask for it. Is it, and.
I missed it. Now I have to repeat it, so I know.
What did we pay him?
About fifteen hundred.
Yeah, I, me personally, you know, in my world, I pull the plug on stuff like this. I don't, when I'm looking at the CEO of the city, he's frustrated, our market director's frustrated. I don't like to waste time. It's like, you know, what's been on with, we're not, we're not pulling teeth. Michelle's got many other things to be doing, then in the creative graphs and, and, and things, and things like a shared page. It's like, so what are you paying for? And when I asked him when he was here, I go, you know, I, I cut them off, I bought the business, they don't know, they don't know any. You know, it's like burning money in a trash can, so. And he goes, well, that was the past, and, and well, now we're here again. It's like, nah, I, you know, my, I'm, I'd like to see just us end the relationship and if anything, send a message to them that, that this is business. And when we're spending money, tax paid money, we need to get something out of it. And if we're not getting anything out of it, then we pull the plug.
I, I brought this back to Greg a week or so ago because I got their weekly newsletter and it was upcoming events. Well, upcoming events included First Fridays, but it wasn't on their upcoming event list. Now, give them credit, last Friday morning, they issued a new newsletter that said it had the blurb about First Fridays. But that, they could have done that a week before, you know, look at their, their event calendar. They've got a couple of, they got Appleumpkins on there for October, but there's no Art Delicious, so not that that's a city event. But I forwarded it over to Greg, I said, you know, I'm not feeling the love. I mean, he was here, he spent an hour and a half of our valuable time telling us how things could be different, and I haven't seen any changes. And, and that's, that's when I said, let's, let's talk about it again, because it's just, I, I agree with that a lot. And, and I've talked to a lot of business, businesses, and business owners here in the city, and they're frustrated with the chamber since they moved. They, the remark is they hadn't, didn't get a whole lot of support when they were here in Adrian, but now that they've moved to the Comcys, they're kidding me. And their, number of them are willing, are thinking about pulling out. The one hesitation I got from one of the business owners was the thing that they did like about what the chamber has done in the past was the Chamber Bucks program that they had, I don't know, a year or so ago, I think it was pre-COVID, where you go to the Chamber office and buy these bucks and could spend them. Did they have the share? But the concern that who's going to go to the Comcys to the office to buy those Chamber? I had a conversation with Jay, and he said that they're looking at, the city is looking at coming up with some kind of City Bucks program that could take the place of that for our local business owners, so.
But that's funded through consumers' energy. Consumers' energy gives the chamber the money to do that.
Maybe they'll give us a buck. Because they won't be, they won't be given as much to the chamber. Anyway, that's, that's where I'm at on this thing. I, I agree that we're not, we're not seeing any great benefit from it.
But you had thought that after he was here last time and we expressed our concerns, that we would have seen a turnaround immediately.
If he was.
Yeah, if he was sincere.
And that's where I was going to go. I, I just felt like it was a lot of talk and nothing changed at all, nothing changed.
So we went through hoop jumping and this is what you need to do, and actually love to help your butt, and that's, that's a lot of trouble.
I'm just highly disappointed because I really thought and see change in there's.
And we were very fair, very clear. I remember the discussion very well when he was here, very clear about our concerns.
I think if Greg came to us and Jay said, hey, you know, hey guys, pump the brakes, we're getting there, but they're slowly getting, we're getting a response. You know, you woke them up a little bit, okay. Not getting it.
We're getting a response, it's just a long one.
What's that?
We're getting a response, it's just a long one.
Right, exactly.
Now, now what we expect?
And it's not forever. No, it's for this year, or, you know.
We can, we can.
I'm joking about the problem.
Greg was so kind as to prepare a resolution that we could add to next agenda if we wanted, if we were so inclined. Just need to know if we're so inclined.
We don't usually like to do that.
I just mentioned that before, I understand.
So is there a, a need to rush it? That's where I was going. I, I don't know that there is. I think we.
Put it on the next agenda.
I think the next agenda.
Put on the next agenda, hold on, it's the past, it's the.
Right. Yep. And if people want to come and talk about it, then they have the opportunity.
Because then I use on the opportunity to come talk about it.
Right.
Good idea. Next up, second item, only other scheduled item, the pickleball courts update.
Right.
Here's my pass ball package.
I'm going to grab my glasses.
Page one there, and I'll walk you through the subsequent pages that follow. This for a while, really trying to nail down, one, the process, potential vendors, in addition to the ongoing site, if we wanted to go with these things. I do have Jason S. with me tonight from Kriegoff, who I'd like to highlight as an extremely instrumental helping us when we finally kind of hit some, some roadblocks from a technical aspect. He stepped up and has been assisting us a ton and me, so he's going to be here just to kind of fill in with me, help to answer any technical question to kind of essentially lead us to where some potential recommendations where we would like to go. So that first page you see there, and then at the bottom right, it's highlighted, this is what I'm calling phase one. So this is where, in my opinion, at this point, and kind of where we've gone from some of the discussions in regards to where potentially we would like to see the pickleball courts is West Park, so right there on the corner. Merrick, McKenzie, Michigan, and right now, through Jason's help and Matt's help, we've identified roughly where the park we would like to go. So this would be the northwest corner that you're seeing up there. Now, if you flip to the back page, the third page, you'll see phase one, courts only, you'll see a red mark, that was my best finger, hit the wrong button. But for phase one, I'm calling strictly just installation, of course, so getting our pickleball courts built, put on site there at West Park, in that location that you see on page one. Through Jason's help, we're looking at 118, 200. And then obviously, the installation of fencing, we've reached out to a handful of vendors, and we've got some quotes that range from 9,500 to 15,000. So again, phase one, simply putting in our pickleball courts, an identified area, an area I think that's actually essential to the city, just up the road from Riverside Park. And actually, we were on site a week ago, and I had two different residents in the surrounding areas come over and just out of sheer curiosity say, hey, we've seen you here on a full tactic four, what do you guys think? Throughout this proposal, both families, residents, said that sounds like a fantastic idea, we like the idea. One, it's centrally located to them, two, also, it's a park that isn't generally not used at all. We call it Joe's squirrel park, see squirrels running around there, and that's about it, too. So through this process, we started to think long-term, and I actually like to credit Matt Tomaszewski, our city engineer. Him and I have just been throwing ideas around, and it really got me thinking, okay, we look at this West Park, we add those pickleball courts there, what else can we do with the park? And it got us thinking and looking at it, talking about some addition of some different phases. So what you're going to see here, phase 1A, is the introduction of bathrooms. In the long term, we would like to host pickleball tournaments, our pickleball folks are extremely excited about this. We started to look it up, and it's, there's pickleball tournaments all over the area. It's a way for us to get people engaged, bring people, excuse me, bring people to the city and the possibility for some revenue generation there. So there's a number of phases, there's a number of ideas when it comes to the bathrooms. Phase two, again, this is thinking long-term, big picture, if you go to page two, on those sites here, is the possibility, and there's a number of ways we could go about this, but one was adding a parking lot right there, or there could even be angled parking along the northeast side on Rice Street. But in addition, again, thinking long-term and maximizing the park, we started looking at the south side there. So you'll see that south side highlighted there, we put future recreation courts. One of the things that community members have been asking for are more basketball courts. We have three in the city, we have one at Riverside, Dunlap, and Parish Park. Those are heavily used, and a single court, you get a game on there, you get a larger, you know, bigger teenagers, adults. That moves your, your younger ones off to the side. Those parks are used constantly, those courts in particular. And so I've had some ongoing conversations with residents and saying, hey, we love basketball, our kids love basketball, there's only these three spots. Now, that is a potential idea that we could put there. There's been requests for more sand volleyball courts, play structures, things of that nature. But again, I'm starting to think long-term and big picture, so that's why we have a couple phases mapped out here. But again, going back to strictly pickleball courts only, that falls under phase one, there's the price that we are looking at, and that is, in my opinion, a desirable location. I'm going to bring Jason in, just to kind of talk a little bit of some of the technical things that have led us to this, because this is a specialty job, this isn't just random company throwing some dirt down, doing things of that nature again. When we hit the roadblocks throughout this year, especially the winter and the spring, I finally reached out to Jason and said, hey, can you help us out? Again, he is instrumental in understanding and learning this process.
Couple things, when we were starting out at Riverside Park, obviously, there, I think Jeremiah had some resistance with some of the contract because of the technical requirements of the top sport court. This top base, obviously, is the most important piece of it. Going over that existing multi-deaf concrete land from the old laceria proved to be enough heartburn that some people were walking away from it. Started pushing it towards Heritage Park, looking at Greenfield site, and the idea of West Park came up. Some of the same technicalities come up, you got to have very specific base course and top course awareness when you go to asphalt this, this some days. So I worked that out with the sport court company, and we sourced, those materials aren't available. That's what. Very able to keep all that in play.
Question for you, Jeremiah. Remind me, until we get parking, is there street parking on those other streets?
Yes.
We get phase one in and.
There is, but we've also identified as we were on site that it really makes sense to add some sort of park, whether or not that would fall under our phase two, putting an actual parking lot, you see on the second page, or angled parking off the northeast side of the park, which was on Rice.
Oh, it's right, what condition is right, you say right now? Okay, you seen it?
That's actually working out.
They're at the summer.
They're, they're paying at the summer.
Yeah.
So it's, 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 yes, I agree, there, there is space, but it is kind of from my recommendation and talking to Matt and others looking at the site, the size, the size of some of the streets, that it does make sense to add some sort of specific park.
You do one of those tournaments.
Once you get the thumbs up, along with the process for phase one.
I'll be honest, I mean, everybody knows it, it's all going to depend on the contractor, their schedule, asphalt guys are pretty much full for the year. I mean, we've got two bids from asphalt companies, both of them said a month ago that they'll do it. So, I mean, it'll be dependent on when we actually get them to go.
Because you're limited with the weather, as far as when you have to cut off asphalt.
Correct. Well, we're more limited with the actual pickleball surface on top, where are the asphalt? The asphalt, you can actually probably put down until in November, so you're not going to be able to put the sport court on top of it that way.
Have you heard an idea of how the surface ages, how well it ages, and pickleball courts? Are they have to be resurfaced every seven years, ten years?
They're, so obviously, living in Michigan, the response that I always get is, well, we live in Michigan, the weather, if we were in southern states, they talk about the life being quite long. That's where, again, when we, this whole initial process, where we start hitting the roadblocks, a lot of these companies are going. Because of the weather, they're unsure about putting on the original surface, so that's where, there isn't a specific until you get into it, sign a contract, and they, and they put the here on there. There is, my research, I have a friend who's superintendent at Bonde Parks, and they said that about every three to five years, they have to do some minor ceiling on it. So, and it's, it's hard, and they won't give you a specific number simply because of the weather. That's just, that's the overall response.
So what do you need from us? Because again, I, I love how you and Matt and Jason worked together on the long-term plan and, and, and then, but, you know, for me, being involved in this process recently, talking to community members, I'd like to have some answers to report back to, to that group and let them know when.
Would it be cheaper to do all phases at one time or not? If we're going to do this in like, we're going to do one this year and one next year, and because of concrete and timing, would it be cheaper to do it all with one shebang or do it in two phases?
Well, I, I think it would be, because we're still, again, when it comes to, to the south side portion, this would be ideally done in two phases. My, my recommendation, what I would like to do is initially, without, was your approval and how we decided forward with this, is to immediately get phase one up and going, so that way we can get the courts in potentially this year. And I've had conversations in regards to the parking lots, angled parking, there's some different ideas going around. I've referred to Jason and Matt, the experts in this field in regards to putting those things in. About storm drainage, Greg, you and I talked about water, so there's a number of factors that play into this, but I think the immediate response right now, or the immediate course of action, is to get phase one up and going. And in regards to 1A, also phase two, we'll give you an opportunity to have more conversations with community members into what would you like to see potentially on that south side of the park? Is it more basketball courts, tennis courts, play structures, things of that nature? That gives us more time to really kind of investigate that, obviously come up with, with figures.
Does, does phase one tear out that center?
Yes. Yeah, so if you're familiar with West Park, right in the center location, there is those four little benches surrounded by some little brick walls right there. Those, the state of those are terrible, they're falling apart, have an eyesore once you get up on it. The pickleball court would extend to that wall, so we would clear that out there. And ideally, depending on the type of bathrooms that we would create, that would be roughly the location correct, would be that general area, putting the bathrooms in the center with some sort of storage room. Obviously, the south side can be developed to whatever, you know, our citizens want. But that's why I put, you know, the possibilities are endless, the more we, once we got on site to really start talking about this, and I'll be the first to say, when the initial West Park idea was thrown out there, I was like, oh, I don't like that. But having continued conversations with folks, my eyes opened up, okay, this makes sense. Then it got the juices, the creative juices flowing and saying, hey, let's really turn this into a desired destination. You know, it's a park that's not really used, but it's centrally located, it does offer kids that are further to the west side, able to get over to that area and enjoy. Again, the possibilities are endless, so that's where we.
Are you saying that, that we could do some angled parking off of Rice with phase one, or is that something we?
That would, that would be, that's phase one, strictly installation of the courts, because we can put the courts in and still have street park. But again, thinking long-term of what we would like to do, I think it makes sense to have some additional parking.
I think.
They're redoing the road.
I'm sure wouldn't want to redo Rice Street without, without trying to visit that possibility. I, this is the route we're going on. We should get with Matt sooner than later.
I'd be thrilled to see that, let's park and see if we can do something on Rice Street. Jeremiah, is the difference in price between Heritage and West?
It's the same thing, that was just, that was my finger hitting the.
Oh, there is no difference.
No, there is, because again, it's a free space right there, there's no having to remove concrete slabs or anything of that nature.
Is there a, what, does it include their cost of tree plant?
So that would be, that would be, so we're, we would use our, our contractor ropes and rigging to take care of that.
What, what are they charging for a tree like that?
I have to look at the numbers of the actual contract, but they're cheaper than any, extremely cheaper than any other venue that we've looked at before, so. Yeah. It'd be a cost-saving price.
I agree, let's go forward with phase one, and then next year, have a plan. I agree. Let's go forward with phase one. And then next year, have a plan for putting in bathrooms and parking. The other things, you know, the basketball courts and volleyball courts, I think that could be actually phase three. So, one would be the, the courts and the fencing. Two would be the bathrooms and parking. And then three would be other.
Yeah, I think the people.
Isn't where they're redoing race, price, community race, Rice Street, that it's, you might as well do the parking then. Right?
I, I think it's important also to announce phase one. Let them know that there are the phases coming and let them know. I'd like to see this go ahead because I'm tired of sending citizens information to Alan to have him send out the call. It's a lot of work, sending emails to you.
Yeah, we're doing the same thing. We're talking angle parking along Rice. It's not really a long place. Only they're coming out of Rice.
Yeah.
Well, we were, we were talking about expanding, sort of expanding the width of Rice Street and providing for angle parking along its length. So we could like do head and parking.
You do only have a limited possibility there because Rice is halfway down, starts dropping the bass.
Oh, really fast.
That's why I asked.
That's why I think we live, we leave parking alone for right now. And redo Rice Street. And then next year, we put in the parking lot.
Just get the courts up.
Yeah, just get the courts up.
And not have this extra parking on the street. By the time we get it done, how many people are actually engaged to use it this year again?
Hey, what's the time?
No.
That has good answer.
Can we, can this come all out of the fee estate?
We've already, budget is seventy-five. And according to my map, if you check on the fencing and whatnot, it's fifty-two or fifty-eight-two is what we'd have to reallocate. We already budgeted seventy-five for it.
The campaign fee estate, fee estate can't.
Well, trust, we can take fifty-eight-two out of trust, that's what's for, which means something like that.
Arpa funds? We have some Arpa funds?
We, the Arpa, remaining Arpa funds are kind of spoken for in several different ways.
Yeah, we bought a fire engine.
I know.
Well, we got to buy a new engine.
A new engine first. The ambulance engine now too.
I'll call you tomorrow. Yes, we did not get the T-Mobile grant for the farmer's market bathroom.
Yep.
But it's a new budget season. I don't put trust is now, but it's, it's a new, you know.
There's gotta be money available.
You pull five percent every year out.
Nice work.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason.
So we have to now, because I want to be able to report here. So we, are we gonna, because we have to vote to because you, it's, it's over your threshold. We have the vote on the fifty-eight-two, or you just go like, with the solid number in two weeks, or?
Yeah, we gotta bring a resolution for that two weeks. So that's, we'll have funding sources included in there. The worth of the proposal.
You're saying the bits and defenses need to be narrowed down to a number of that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I'm excited.
Oh, we got it. All building things have been used in, on, so, and put in for again.
Well, I mean, I guess the question is, do you even wanna, maybe intermediate step, or do you wanna just tell Jeremiah?
I, I'd, I'd like to see this go forward. I mean, if you haven't even like types of old trust, you can generalize. I mean, we have, why, why take it out of the market, even though the market's down? Right. We have plenty of money to do it.
So just get it out?
Yeah, yes. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Get it going.
But I would like to say, you know, Jay, you know, Jason will spend a lot of time on this. He should be stifling some kind of consultant because again, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have people working for us for nothing, like, you know, because I'm sure he'll bid the project. I'm sure he'll bid the project, but it's like, you can't just expect vendors to do stuff for free for us. This is not how business works either, so.
Also pickleball.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you, guys.
Uh, I don't have any other scheduled topics.
I was hoping to bring up, but we're getting close to time, but just to surely, I don't want to throw it out there really quick. Zeno somebody approached Commissioner Dallas as well. At the Human Relations Commission meeting last Tuesday, we had a concerned citizen that came and spoke about the fact that we are not, we were not flying the, the pride flag outside. It was inside City Hall and and as you may recall, when Nathan Bird was still the city administrator, they had actually discovered that you can't fly another country's flag because it was during Mexican Heritage Month, I mean Hispanic Heritage Month, sorry. They can't find the Mexican flag and the Puerto Rican flag lower than the US. It's actually in this code of flying your, the US flag, you cannot fly another country's flag lower. That's what spurred this whole conversation on before city administrator Greg Elliott. It was even prior it to me. It was like right as I came in, this was all kind of hitting at the same time, um, when I came into office, but, um, so they had passed a policy back then that they weren't gonna fly anybody's flags. They were all going to be inside and, you know, there could be a flag ceremony, but they would be inside. Um, there is, there are quite a few constituents that are very unhappy with that, um, from this past month. And that it what, that it is inside and not outside. And, um, because you see it, you were seeing it at problematic hospital, you're seeing it, you know, at the state Capitol, you were seeing it in a lot of other places. Um, I will say, you know, Greg and I talked about it for a long time, you know, about this policy. And, and both Greg and I were both approached. There is a, there is a migrant flag that exists, like a US farm workers migrant flag. I, it's something along that line. They wanted to fly that. They had already come to us, I, maybe April, May? I can't remember when that discussion, and they said, no, we have this policy. So there are other requests that come in for flying flags. It's not just been this where they're not country flags, because obviously, so you know, it puts us in the pickle that if we were to fly other flags, then on Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month, we can't fly those flags because there isn't a Hispanic Heritage flag per se. It's just for that, that month. It's countries' flags that you're flying. And therefore our flag poles do not account for that. We, we can't make it work without the flag pole situation we have. I don't know if you want to say any more to that, but Greg and I talked about it great length. I had people approach me at First Friday about it. Commissioner Dallas and people approached him, talked to me at First Friday about it. Um, and, um, you know, the email came today, another email came from somebody, that somebody here had reached out to somebody um, that's pretty high up within LGBTQ, um, position from a different state, you know, reaching out about this as well, because we haven't been flying the flag. Out, I mean, we're flying it, it was just inside, but that's, you know, obviously different. So, you know, where do we go from here? Is this something where we set a policy, you know, are you gonna have everybody coming in? And I know that's what Greg has expressed to me. We, we've already had people coming in asking to fly other flags. Like, how many more people are gonna come in and ask them to fly other flags? You know, we, we could run into that. I don't know if you want to say anymore to that, but.
Well, just the, you know, the cost of a flag pole.
Oh, yeah.
Tens of thousands of dollars.
Like forty thousand dollars.
On a flag pole, which would, which would allow for the flying of another country's flag, which has to be the same height as the US flag. You know, and who knows if that works for organization flags.
And that was like a year ago that we got like a forty thou, or two years. It was a while ago.
Yeah, it was.
Who knows what it is now?
Prices probably several times that much now. You know, we, up, up until this month, we thought we had a good compromise. So, you know, just having a flag ceremony inside City Hall. Anyways, it's nicer. And those fly outside the mayor's office for whatever period of time we're recognized, so. Seems like it's worked well without. But wait. Five months, uh, most were, at least some folks were unhappy. They were not only unhappy with it not flying a flag pole, though, they were also unhappy because we didn't have a most current flagpole. The flag that we acquired, he just acquired, they given to us last year.
We bought it last year.
Last year. Um, so it's not like we set out to acquire a nominee flag that we criticize also.
It seems like we're trying to accommodate everybody by having one policy. Yes, my question is, does anybody know is to come see Westfield, Hudson, are they, are they flying flags outside their city house?
I don't.
I think Adrian's always been kind of a pioneer in looking at culture and diversity and, and, and welcoming that. And we, we have a, a pretty interesting history here in the city of Adrian. So if this is something that maybe we just need to step out of the box of what we've had, follow the flag code and see if this is something that we put up. I mean, it sounds like it's gonna be a hefty amount, but no, we got money to spend it. If that's going to create, you know, we used to have like the Heritage Festival and things like that that celebrated all of those things, and we've kind of lost that. So maybe this is something that we can do to bring back some of that. Need to get a little creative with it and look at what we can do differently. Because that's obviously not gonna work.
In the meantime, we're still doing proclamations, right?
Yeah. You know, and one, one idea that did come out of that discussion from Human Relations Commission meeting there night is, you know, maybe it's something even as simple as doing something, and I don't know if this is a possibility, just put that out there. You know, like how Chalmers has their flag poles coming off the building, like maybe it's something where we have a few flag poles that come off the building and we hang there instead. So it's not in conflict with the US flag. Just a thought, I don't even know. That would be a lot cheaper, I'm sure, than putting on in the ground with the concrete because those poles are huge and they were there with the bank many years ago. So that's what we inherited. I don't know if that's even something that can be done, but I thought that was a great idea. Um, you know, because those side poles that come off the angle of Chalmers and you, you do that at the back. So it's near the other flags, but it's, I don't know if that's in conflict. I don't.
Could fly another country's flag like that.
Not the country, but I just meant the other, as opposed to putting them in the ground like other, other flags, if you did change that. That, that's what I meant, to go along with what you were saying. To not have to buy it. That was my point. Yeah. I mean, to buy the, the expensive.
You know, and this was pointed out to us. We could fly high flag on the same pole with the US. That's not, because it's not a country's flag. But the decision that was made back when Nathan Bird was here was, well, you know, because we can't do that for one, we won't do that for R. Because the flot, the flags that we've flown during Hispanic Heritage Month, those are the Mexican and Puerto Rican flag. Um, you know, we made the decision that folks since those can't fly at a height other than the same height as the US flag, we won't fly them. Why so long? Move inside. Treat every roof and every recognition the same. It doesn't have to be that way. There's no prohibition against flying high flag on a pole.
And my only issue is that I, I am very sensitive to the fact that we have a very, very large Hispanic population. And that's what's always been so awesome and unique and great about Eden is that we do have this large Hispanic population. And I, I really err on the side of being very sensitive. You know, I, I did talk to somebody that has always been involved with doing the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. Um, you know, about how would you feel if those flags didn't go, but the rest of the flags were out because it's, you know, the country's flags and you know, he said, I need to think about that. He didn't say no, or anyway, just suddenly you think about it, but, but I'm sensitive to that. And I feel like, how does that reflect to that, to our large Hispanic population in our city? Because our city is, you know, has a very large population if we don't recognize Hispanic Heritage Month with the flags, if we're recognizing others. And so that's where I feel like the problem is. And I feel like that's where the problem was before, probably, in the, in the thinking of when this policy was brought in. But, yeah, I'm, I, I know it seems astronomical for these flag poles, but that's kind of where I've been leaning is do we just need to bite the bullet and fix these flag poles? And, you know, I've kind of brought it up before and get, you know, get a couple more that are taller. They don't need to be as wide and monstrous as the one that the US one is on. Because that one is just huge, but maybe, I don't know. Just, it's just something, and I don't know if we're at that point, and I don't really know. I'm, I'm just trying to be sensitive that, that we do have this large population. And how would I feel if you're not gonna put my flags up for Hispanic Heritage Month, but you're gonna put somebody else's up? I, I know how I would feel.
Hey, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, not that this is how I feel, but what if we make a policy, we don't do any flags? And we've spent a lot of city time on this already. We can't define flags for every thing. What, in, in, I'm sorry, but, you know, the Supreme Court's latest decision that fair can happen after football games. Does that mean I can pray to Satan? And what if there's a Satan Heritage Month and whatever? And they come and say, well, you put up for Black History Month, I want this put up too. It's a, it's, it's something that I, I, I've been to. I, I've come to the flag raising for Pride Month. I completely agree with. But are we to that point in our society where we, as I say, people ruined it? And we aren't going to do anything now.
I would hate to see the city or some city worker being reprimanded because um, certain months of celebrating certain group. And it's, and that month stopped the thirty-first, and somehow that flag was flying the first of the next month. Because they didn't change the flags over the weekend, and they're being reprimanded because you didn't go from this flag to this flag to this flag. And why is that flag flying when this is also another important month for this? I think we're in a lot of trouble. I, I don't know how other people handle it. I don't know.
I, I think that they probably handle it that it's not along anything. That would be my guess. I mean, we have a huge German and Polish. And Irish. I mean, in our town. So, you know. Polish Heritage Month coming up here soon. And then we have the, the city is responsible for purchasing those and storing and putting them up and taking it down and I hate it. I hate that we're, that we've come to this. I really do. But I don't, I don't know what the solution is. Are we gonna be putting it? Are we gonna have to have criteria again? Well, who gets to have a flag for this month? And, you know, because that could happen.
That's what Greg and I've already said is gonna, yeah.
It's related to the, what's the special event?
Yes. Yep.
And that's gonna come back. We, we have to get some proposed criteria for it. We're already being asked to designate events, special events. Because special events, I don't want us to get to have food trucks now. Another way to skin that cat is change the rule on when food trucks can be down town. Simply make it the rule that if the street's closed, that pursuant to the location criteria that are already in ordinance, that food trucks can be a part of any street closure. Right now, there's a competition to be a special event because if you're a special about.
All right.
Yeah, so something to think about. Yeah, I can't, but, all right, moving on. We have to move on right now. We have to put a comment because we're behind, we're past time. But at this time, we will have public comment. There is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Hello, we're Ken Ramos here. All right. So I have a couple of things first about the flag. So I get that it's difficult, but sometimes difficult things are necessary to help represent your citizens. And part of it does come down to how much do you care about representing minority citizens? How much do you care about making them feel welcome? I can tell you that most people don't even know that the pride flag is in the city chambers because it's not out where they can see it. Similar goes to other flags. And yeah, there are a few different ways it could be done. I would say that you should probably just deal with the poll and maybe come up with what are the restrictions? Because I'm pretty sure we all agree that we're not going to fly a Nazi flag. So yeah, there are limits. But some of those should be pretty obvious by whatever's I put now. Like I'm pretty sure we don't put up religious flags either, because it's a government building and separation of church and state. So there are some restrictions and maybe you even want to go the route of a little petition. Because you know, a lot of people aren't willing to put in a lot of work when you put up even a couple of stops. So if a petition of like 20 signatures is what it takes, well, people who are interested and really dedicated are going to bother to. And some won't. But it is important for it to be shown, not just hidden off in some room upstairs. And I also apologize, my eyes are all messed up. I didn't get a chance to check that. But I'd also like to bring up that some issues in parks. We need more signage in the parks. We need more lighting in the parks. We've been asked for this for a while and it's not just Parrish. It's not just Dunlap. Most of our parks do need more light and some of them have got more lighting. That has been helpful, but we need more. And again, we don't have much as far as signage. There's. I can't even tell you how many of the parks are missing different types of signage. And I've gone over this with a couple of commissioners before. And I'll be happy to elaborate. An email to someone if you want, but it is definitely a need. And especially with there being more events coming up in parks and more activity in the parks. It would be important to have that signage. Don't know how close I am to my three minutes. I'll call it there. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? May I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will begin at seven fifteen.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for July 5th, 2022. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by a no yes vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda. Under ordinances, ordinance number 22-002 is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 26, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Section 26.74, and to add Article 3, Fire Inspections, Sections 26.75 through 81. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by a no yes vote.
Ordinance number 22-003 is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 3 of the City of Adrian's zoning development regulations and the zoning map to which reference is therein made to the extent of deleting 115 East Maple Avenue from the R O Residential Office District and including the same in the B2 Community Business District. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
I have a question, mayor. In our packet, it mentioned that this was to provide parking for three other businesses. But are they going to take down that residence?
If I could answer that, I, I believe that is their intention would be to take it down. In fact, there may be a demolition order, in fact, on that house that's on there right now.
They were at the planning commission meeting and they had said that, or zoning, one of them. They had just recently said they already have a demolition order that they are taking it down.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by an all yes vote.
Resolution R 22-053 is from fire. It is a resolution to approve a fee schedule for the fire inspection program. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, I'd just like to state that the fee schedule in the fire inspection program is done for the safety of our citizens, our buildings, our businesses and our visitors. It is not done to be punitive or to make money for the city of Adrian. We are doing it out of caution and care for the people that are in the city of Adrian.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-054 is from fire. It is a resolution to approve the use of American Rescue Plan funds to repair a 2012 Marquee ambulance through the purchase of a new engine. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-055 is from human resources. It is a resolution to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Adrian and the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan, Adrian Public Employees Association. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-056 is from the city commission. It is a resolution to approve a step increase for the city administrator. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Casper?
I just want to thank Greg for his leadership over the last year. I feel like we've got to do a lot of great things this year. Commission has come together really well. I'm proud of what we've accomplished and I think a lot of it has to do with Greg's leadership. So I just want to say thank you, Greg, for all that you've done for the city in the last year.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by an all yes vote.
It is now time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin inside city chambers first. And after all public comment within the chambers is done, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now. Hearing no public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
Hello again, we're Ken Ramos, 422 South Winter Street. I know it's been a long time. So again, I just want to say we need more attention to the parks. We need a more regular mowing schedule. We need better signage and just general care at a lot of the parks. And then I also want, want to invite you all to Second Fridays, of course. A three Second Fridays going on, on Second Friday, so that's Friday. We'll also cook off on 16th. Yeah, I just see some of you there. I know at least a couple of you will definitely be there. And I'm sure it'll be a great time. Feel free to come down and actually see some residents. And that's all for now. I already gave you some of my comments in the previous meeting. So, thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, on the consent agenda, we approved the reappointment of Harry Dusty Steele and Kevin Iett to the Adrian DDA Main Street Board. And although they're not here, I'd just like to publicly acknowledge all the work that they do and the rest of the board does. It's an unpaid volunteer commission and, or board. And they do a lot of work for, for us as the city of Adrian. And so we'd like, I'd like to thank both of them plus the rest of the board.
I would like to thank our mayor Proton, Commissioner Halt for taking over and taking the reins. Last meeting when I had to have emergency unplanned surgery and could not be here. So thank you very much. And just appreciate the help there that day. Thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.